Do I read the line of the board to order please? Let's start with the budget regions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, thank you. Pretty excited to start this new term. We welcome Mr. Locke in his new position. The law of Mr. Edley in his new position. And so we're excited to have you all on board, okay? So I'm gonna start with additions to the agenda. Unfortunately, Scott and I will know with three times that we missed on the agenda, we'll place those bills, we'll pay the bills. So, let's put the bills. We won't put a lot of consent agenda if we missed it. So, can we put it right before the superintendent report? Everyone hear that? Put the bills right before the superintendent report and let's put the bills at that point? Okay, and then, I have one more thing too. Where did Mike? I would like, can we put after the, after the high school first reading, 105, can we put Mike Trump? So he has a chance to say anything, but he's, but it came up. So he's here and, and he wants to talk about a few things, so we forgot to put him on the agenda too. And as great as they're here, because no one did not come on the July meeting to extend what else? So 105, high school handup, we'll put Mike Trump. And then Aaron, Mr. Locke, we had to put it out here. Were we putting another policy thing on here?
I believe I have it in there.
You have it in there now?
BBA, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Any additions to the agenda? Okay, if there's no other additions to the agenda, besides the two I just brought up, I would move that we have an approval of agenda.
I moved it.
Okay, move by James? Second by Spencer? Probably move in second that we approved the agenda. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Washington now secures. Okay, we have new business. We have the outgoing superintendent report. He's not here, I think he talked about coming, and he sent it to you. It should be in your, it should be in your report. The final superintendent report, so I'm keen to motion to accept his final report.
I'm in motion to accept it.
Okay, is there a second to accept it? Okay, Spencer's second? Okay, probably move in second it. To accept the final report from Dr. Lukens. In discussion, says report, discussion, discussion. All in favor of accepting this final report, we say aye.
Aye.
In motion passes. Okay, now we're going to go, okay, so, this is gonna be quick. So Spencer is on the, Spencer Marchand is on the phone. And Spencer, you're going to give up your spot here in a minute. So I'm gonna give you a chance to talk about your experience on the board, or anything you want to say to the board.
Sure. Well, and I apologize for not being there in person tonight, just some things came up. But all I have to say is that, to Mr. Anderson, to Colette, Vanessa, James, it's been an absolute pleasure and honor to serve with you guys the last three years. I've learned an incredible amount of stuff in the last three years, and I'm really proud of a lot of the things that we did together. I think we had some good discourse. I think that we worked well together. I have the utmost respect for all four of you. And I wish, you know, Mr. Arnold who's coming on, and with the best of luck. I wanted to say a huge thank you to the admin that I've worked with, you know, our principals, superintendent, you know, Mr. Locke who's here now. I wish him the absolute best. I'm really excited for him to be on board, and I hope that he has all the tools to succeed. Mike, both our principals, I think they do unbelievable work. I'm so thankful, I think Zane, as hard to be a business manager, has done an outstanding job. And I'm really proud of what he's done. I think that in his first year, I couldn't have asked more from a first year. And then, of course, to all the instructional staff. I mean, we have some of the best in the states, or if not the best. I mean, we have just tremendous people here, as well as all the ancillary staff. I mean, it's just, it's pretty incredible to learn what they do every day, and the amount of work that they put in. I couldn't ask for better here. And so, all I want to extend is, it's just a huge thank you. It's, again, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve. I've had a lot of fun, been really difficult at times, which is okay, which is part of the job. But ultimately, it's been really, really worthwhile. And being able to serve in a capacity that is about educating the new generation coming into the workforce, coming into society, I think is really, really important. And I hope that we just keep on doing the good work that we're doing. How we figure out some things that still need to be figured out. So with that, I just want to extend again a huge thank you. I'm so thankful for the experience that I've had. And I wish the new board, just obviously, the best of luck. And if there's anything that I could do to support them, I'm there. I mean, it's just, this is so important for our community. And I think a lot of people understand that. And I want one thing too, I do want to say too, is I'm grateful for the increased engagement in what our school district does over the last three years. I think that we've done a lot of really important things. We've talked about a lot of really important things. Sometimes contentious, which again is okay. That's, that's all about growth. And so I think that as we continue those conversations, all we can do is continue to grow, and that's what I want for Harvey Public School District. So with that, I'm unbelievably thankful. I, again, I wish I could have been there in person tonight, which is, which is unfortunate. But it's just, it's been the honor of a lifetime. And I'm really, really proud of what we've done. And I just can't wait to see what Harvey Public Schools does in the future. And with that, it's kind of all I have, I guess. I'm a little bit of a rambler, so I won't take too much time. But, you know, I wish Mr. Arnold was able to take my seat, the best of luck. I'm glad he took up and took the step and, and received the community's support. And I wish him the best in that role, and I'm sure he's getting a fine addition to this board of education. That's already very fine.
Okay, so Spencer, on behalf of the board, I would like to express our gratitude for your service for three years, and your advice and your wisdom. And that we wish you nothing but the best as you carry on the next state, or some of those things you're gonna do in the future. So, thank you again, and we appreciate you.
Yes, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Well, with that, we will now then officially turn over the ranks. And so, I'm gonna go to the business manager. And I know that you have to square them in. You're not a notary, but I believe you took both of these to the bank? And that they're both sworn in and you're all the duty, correct? So, both James, we knew his, and Bradley is, so they're officially have sworn in their duties. So we're all set then, right? And I shouldn't have to have a motion, because we moved, the last motion to accept that, we're election result. So, with they're sworn in, that's a, the oath of office is a, a thing that everybody must do when they come back on, so that's been done. Okay, so we're all good at that? Everybody understand that? Okay, awesome. Well, so first of all, let's welcome Bradley Arnold onto the board. We welcome you Bradley, and I think you're a new head of the board. And Spencer, Bradley goes first.
Hello.
Student of mine, so, that's the same as that, so. Oh, that's one of them today? Okay, so, does he want to say anything?
Hello?
Okay, Dr. Lukens, second half?
Yes, yes, I just came in here from the field.
Okay, well, we accepted your report, but do you want to, do you want to say anything? As outgoing superintendent?
No, it was, it was honor, privilege. Do you have any questions from you? I'm open to them. But as of in that time, I'm available for questions if there was any.
Okay, and again, as I told Spencer, we appreciate your service to our school board. And we thank you for your two years of service, and we wish you best in your future activities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, with that then, thank you for coming in. So with that, we will reorganize the school board. I mean, he hung up, so. Yeah, I mean, yeah, he has the right to listen too. Okay, so with that, we'll reorganize the school board. And we'll start July of year. We'll start with the elections for the work, oh no, let's do that. Let's do the BBA. We talked about the BBA. Let's do this first, make sure that, for policy, we got this. For BBA, let's, let's pass that for the second reading before we elect a school boardman. And on there, it talks about the offices of the board. And so, I'm just gonna read the first sentence, the first paragraph, so you understand this. At the end of the meeting in July, the board shall elect a president and vice president. The president and vice president shall serve for one year until they are elected. So just one year. And the outside vice president shall not automatically rotate in order of length on the board. Board members shall take into consideration qualifications, and make a good officer and now leave the committee. And somewhere on here, I read today, oh yeah, way in the bottom, absence. And I don't think this is ever gonna happen, but this is what you're all aware of. When the president and vice president are absent, the most senior board member shall act as chair for all county. Okay, so we all know the chain of command then will be president, vice president, and then the one that serves the longest on the board after that. Okay? All right, so I would entertain a motion to accept this, this is the second reading, correct? Correct, I would entertain a motion to accept the BBBA on the second reading.
Triple B?
Triple B, yeah, BBB, sorry.
Almost the second.
Yeah, okay, is there a second?
I'll second it, Bradley. I don't know if President is the first one. Oh, it's second.
Should be a second.
I think it's the second. I think it's the second. You okay with that?
Yep.
Any discussion? Discussion, discussion? Okay, is it all in favor of accepting BBBA, how the outfits of the board work? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, with that then, we will ask for nominations for president of the board.
I am making a nomination for Woodland to be president.
Okay, are there any nominations? Are there nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? I would recommend a motion to cease nomination to Kathy Nanos Bell, for Wade Anderson. Okay, James, move, is it a second?
I'll second.
Is that a second? Okay, probably move in second, right? Kathy Nanos Bell for Wade Anderson for president. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, again, thank you. Okay, next nomination is for board vice president. Any nominations for vice president?
I'm nominating for her.
Hey, Colette Hurst has been nominated. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? After three calls, being older nominations, I would ask for, to cease nominations to Kathy Nanos Bell for Colette Hurst for vice president. Okay, James, move, is it a second? Bradley's second? Okay, somebody's second? All in favor, please say aye. Okay, all right, now we're going to go to the board standing committee policy. You want to do the BBD then once? Am I supposed to do that now?
I don't, I think that's just what policy.
That's just their, their way of bringing this to make it.
Okay, all right. So, so these are the couple of committees. And so Bradley, you're probably gonna get what Spencer didn't have, probably what's gonna happen here. So, but we can talk about this. And so, do we nominate after each one?
We just, I actually want to.
Do we go through the whole thing, and then accept it?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so, building and transportation is the first one. And that was James and Spencer, so James doesn't have a choice, he's gonna be on it again. And so, Bradley, you okay with clearing for that? Okay, so Bradley and James go here first. And then under collaborative bargaining, Colette will be on that, because she's been doing it for years. Anybody else gonna be on that? Anybody else? So many waves with her? Okay, and then, we're gonna talk about this a little bit. So, discongruitions, was a committee we started a couple of years ago. You know, and the whole point of that was like, if a neighboring town wanted to do something, would we meet without? So after meeting, in our executive thing with Aaron and Colette and I, we just realized that, do we really need this right now? Do we need a history of relations committee? Can we just, if something happens, or what, do we all work together with the board on that?
Well, we can always.
We can always make it work, yeah. Yeah, so our idea was just let that sit for now? Is everybody okay with that? Okay, all right. So then the co-op board, right now is James and Colette. Your vote interest of being on again?
Yes.
Everybody okay with them being on again? Okay, so James and Colette will be on the co-op board. Okay, and then, leadership board, Vanessa and myself? Vanessa?
Yes.
And I will serve on that again as well. So, James, and then, policy. Bradley is dying to get on policy.
What is policy?
Policy is all the stuff that's coming here. You don't want to be on it often.
I'm willing to.
Okay, so move ahead, Vanessa.
My high school.
That's why I do it.
Colette, and then leadership will be Wade and Colette. Okay, and then, technology?
Leadership of Wade and Vanessa.
Wade and Vanessa, yeah, yes, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, and then technology? So, that's kind of a, what's gonna happen here is that James and Bradley are not on two. Oh, no, so, technology can be anybody. Bradley's only on one, so Bradley should probably be on technology. And then, who else wants to be on technology with him? James, you want to be on that show?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so here's what I have, I'm gonna read this through. I have building and transportation, James and Brad. I have collective bargaining, Colette and Wade. I have co-op, James, James and Colette. Leadership, I have Wade and Vanessa. Policy, I have Vanessa and Colette. And then, under technology, I have Brad and James. And then, we don't have chairmen on each of those. Kind of, you can decide your own. As board president, I should not be chairman of anything. So, the two committees I'm on, the other two people are chairmen. Other than that, you guys can work out these chairmen, okay? You okay with that, James?
Okay.
All right, so I would like a motion to accept our committee standings.
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, Colette, move in there, we accept, is it a second?
Second.
Okay, James, second? Any discussion on our committees?
You can vote first if you want, but I'd just like to make a suggestion. I really, really strongly think that at least one janitor should be on the voting committee.
And I, I'm totally agreeing with that. And to me, it should be our head janitor. So, are we okay with, with, with all horses?
I'm not against it. I just think this was like for board members.
Yeah, right.
But I would say invite them every time.
Yes.
I mean, I didn't know, because these are like a standing board committee?
Yeah.
So, but yes, I agree, I think they should be invited to every.
And James?
Leadership committee never meets, that's just, it's always all those other people as well. In fact, we couldn't meet the board because we didn't have everybody.
Right, no, I meant like as far as the motion that we were saying.
Yes.
But I, I agree with you that they should be at your meetings, you know? No, I just meant like for the motion.
And your superintendent, he's the head always needs to.
Right, yeah, but no, I agree with that.
Okay, and then, Jason, you said that's a suggestion? Okay, not a wonderful suggestion?
Signed up for it.
Oh, yes. Okay? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the board's placement of the members of committee, please say aye. In motion now secures. Okay, now we'll go to student outcomes. Mr. Locke?
As far as the guardrails passage, being that when I started, it was right around the Fourth of July holiday. I have a meeting set up with Sue from the D legendary group for Thursday morning, so I'm gonna get kind of baptized by fire on that. It's essentially a two-hour training that.
She's laughing at.
Right, it probably takes a couple, maybe more like a day or day and a half, but she's gonna give me, teach me the ropes that day, and we're gonna start going through those guardrails. And in order to pass them, obviously, I would share those guys with you well in advance to make sure you guys are on the same boat as I am.
And I can give you the four that we come up with that day.
All right, any other questions about that? People take care of that, they'll come up with arguments, meaning that, what happened with those two of their meeting?
And we don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion, nope, nope. Just that, all I'm asking, is there any questions? Okay, no questions? Okay, now we'll go to the consent agenda. I would like to, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? One, two, three, and four. Okay, is there a second? Is there a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll, I'll do the second.
Okay, probably move in second, the consent agenda? Okay, now, Sue, are you still there? I believe that we are supposed to do a, are you still there, Sue?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Am I supposed to do a?
Yes, thank you.
I, I, your last thing, you told me that when we do a consent agenda, we should do a roll call vote?
That is, that is our coaching recommendation. That way, if there are any items on consent that require a roll call vote, you've had a roll call vote.
Okay.
If you don't have to.
Okay, all right. So, is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah. Um, I guess, I'm, my biggest thing I guess is with the computer. Looking, I'm trying with the tuition agreement. It's a second meeting of those policies, and we need, but I'm not sure if we need to have it out.
I agree. So.
You want to take, you want to take that off?
Okay, that's okay, I'll take off.
And the motion is to take, it can be in the rotation off that consent agenda.
I'm also uncertain about the tuition.
Yeah, but remember, we can't talk about this.
But we can ask about what it is.
Yes, you can.
Again?
And I don't understand what it is.
Okay, so you want to take that off too?
I don't know.
Okay, so, it's being asked, if we take the number one and number two off, so we are, we are, consent agenda then would be three. The second reading of policy to approve of all board meetings. Is everybody okay with that? Discussion, discussion, discussion? So, we are voting on, so one and two have been removed, and we're gonna vote on whether to.
The bill.
Okay?
Yes.
No, the bills, the bills, I had to add because it's kind of put on the table. Okay, so, all those in favor of approving the second reading of the two policies and the board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, so the second, the second reading and approval has passed. It goes to back with tuition agreement. Remember, remember, we can't talk about names.
Roll call.
Okay?
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I listen really good, don't I? I listen really heavy to you, don't I? Stop so you get older. Okay, so, we need a roll call vote? On, on item three and four?
Yes.
Yes!
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. It's gonna be the president too, so, okay, back up. Colette, number three and four pass. Now we're gonna go back to tuition agreement. Remember, you cannot talk about these names. You're only asked about what it is about. No names can be said here. Okay, so, is there any discussion?
Yeah.
So essentially, there is a family that resides within our district that is choosing to educate their children through a program through, it's called Yellowstone School District. It's essentially out of Fairmount, or Fairmount, right on the border over Montana. So that program runs through that school district. It's at zero expense to our school district. We pay nothing for them to take that avenue, but it has to be approved at the board level to allow for it to happen.
Basically, it's kind of homeschool, right?
Essentially, it's a homeschool program, but the curriculum is run through that Yellowstone School District.
I thought I had heard of that.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the tuition agreement, please? Okay, Vanessa moves, there's a second? James seconds? Discussion, discussion, discussion? Again, that's a discussion, actually, it's all in favor of the staff. Okay, now let's talk about the computer location. And you know what, before we do that, Anna, why don't you say a few things about you and Mr. Starbuck has had conversation about this, so.
So, in talking specifically with staff computers, let me just pull up email here. Mrs. Starbuck and myself determined that, based on a, on the current age of some of the computers, to start replacing computers on what was set up as a three-year rotation, there would have been four purchased this year, three purchased next fiscal year, and the following year, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we'd have been purchasing twenty-one staff computers to help keep that rotation going. So, the idea was that if we can take those twenty-eight computers and put them on a more balanced rotation, especially when you're looking two years down the road of purchasing twenty-one, the cost of those computers might go up considerably between now and then. So if we set up that staff computer rotation for the time being to be a little bit more balanced, it's gonna, it might cost more money this year, but in the long run, it's probably gonna save the district money. So essentially, what we would be looking at, this year, instead of purchasing or upgrading four staff computers, it would be upgrading seven. Next year, instead of three, it would be ten. And the following year, instead of twenty-one, we'd be looking at updating eleven of them. Just to try to help keep that balanced out a little bit, so we don't have big hits on the technology budgets moving forward.
Okay?
The last ones are in one of these?
Yeah, which one's the staff?
Yeah, which one?
Is this the board, like ninety-nine dollars?
Those, those ninety-nine dollar ones, they're the K through three chromes. Let me see here.
The one through three.
Excuse me, the one through, thank you.
We're not doing, we're not doing I-12?
Can we, we'll do I there and we'll remain with it.
Okay. Okay, all of their teams.
Yep.
The honor one? I think that he had the honor, but the one that was.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm glad he did.
Okay, so, technically here, to be correct, we should have a motion to accept this, and then we can discuss this. So can I have a motion, please, to accept the, James moves, is there a second? Okay, Colette's second, okay. Now, probably, now we can discuss and ask questions about the bill.
Okay, so, if this honor is all said and called, so then.
The ones that are ninety-nine dollars.
Okay, so is there questions here? Hang them all up.
Okay, so I was just trying to figure out what the staff ones are, because these all they call books, and then just.
Okay, so it might not, that particular one might not be in your physical board packet.
Oh, okay, okay.
But can figure out on print, that print room.
Sure.
Either way, probably.
So, that would be honor then also?
Yes.
Okay, and it was, what, he said issue with seven of them? Seven staff?
Correct, plus, they're, they're purchasing computers for new staff members as well, that the standing thing has been going on for years. I could look. So we're looking at, we're looking at thirteen computers, and I have the estimate right here, and I'll print it if I can figure out how to. Thirteen computers with onsite support and warranty for the teacher's laptop, looking at seventeen, five, sixty, one, fifty, seven.
So, it's off, that's the benefit period.
So are we not replacing your old computers then, or is that not what I'm understanding?
Say it again.
Are we replacing your old computers?
One-year-old computers? Could be, no.
So we're off of the rotation, or is that? Are you gonna do a four-year or?
Well, and that's something that we need to sit down and discuss as a technology committee establishing, because I know, I've heard that you guys had a three-year rotation set up at one point in time, and also done a five-year rotation. So to find a compromise, so to find a compromise between the two, typically, your technology support companies are gonna cover them for three years. How do you find that happy medium between that three and five? Four looking like an ideal option if possible, but I think that's something the technology committee has to, to down discuss, is establishing Four looking like an ideal option if possible, but I think that's something the technology committee has to, to now discuss, is establishing a more permanent and feasible rotation for staff technology.
So we do one for five, three, and one?
Yeah, three was three.
We may have another meeting for what?
But then it hits you hard in the end, if you're, that's exactly.
They were doing iPads. Can we learn from this, together?
Yeah.
And now, these are.
So the reason they, sorry. The reason they transitioned from iPads to Chromebooks is because when it comes to doing like the status assessment, Chromebooks were, or excuse me, iPads were compatible with. Chromebooks being compatible with that particular software, uh, it's just more easier.
And at a hundred bucks a piece, you'd be foolish not to, not to do it.
Seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. For all three of them, with staff. Those, the hardware, and the.
And now including there are, um. Okay.
Well, I took this fifty thousand, three oh six, I took fifty-one thousand, and you said that the staff ones were about seventeen, five, sixty, one.
Seventeen, five, sixty, one.
Yeah, so all, so that one plus these two is all seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Right. With, without, without your other stuff.
Oh, the other aren't, the armor, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I, yeah, this is just the computers.
How long were you trying to go with, uh, with staff computers prior? More than three years, four years? Five? Or longer than that?
We, it's the same thing, we're on the rotation, we're on three, and then it went to five, and some were, you know, we find out, right around year four, year five, the staff computers started having a ton of issues going on with them. Mine was three years old and hard drive crashed on the fifth year, and, you know, it's just, there's a ton of work that goes on.
There is.
Four probably.
So you pay for trying to.
Well, and the other, the other part is, most of these devices, you can get three in a morning.
Yeah.
So that means something happens, and it's all right, it's good, where you go to year four, and all of a sudden, you're, you're. It, it all depends, I think.
I had to think five is probably pushing it.
Yeah.
Um, what was our, what was our number last year?
No. Yeah, I probably wouldn't figure it out. I'm not probably all the computers.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I could probably figure it out, I mean, that's taking account of that, but, I can.
I would say if in three years, we have twenty million that I do up, we probably haven't bought a lot of staff.
Right.
Probably been three or four.
So what a person doing, not a person.
Oh, yeah. I see that we paid sixty thousand on last June, uh, last July for student's laptop. Put thirty thousand to each school building. I don't remember if there was another second bottoming off, but I can imagine this is our one. It was like sixty-one thousand.
And they don't get you either.
We had just bought the iPads, which kind of, so we younger age, probably three years, two, four, that's like thirty-five, like that was.
The problem with the iPads is for star testing and early literacy, and, um, they're difficult, they're more difficult than a Chromebook would be, but for kindergarten, they'll be all right. But they're.
What are we gonna do with them?
Kindergarten's getting, I don't know what the plan is.
Yeah, really just that, though. We need to discuss, two, two years ago, you sent honor check for a hundred thousand dollars for staff laptops, student's staff. So a hundred thousand two years ago, and sixty thousand last year, and then you pay like thirty-three hundred a month for the IT service company.
And that's what I thought was supposed to get us caught up. So we can't be running them from behind.
And then you, I do see where you, uh, March of twenty-twenty-three, about three months before you sent two hundred thousand dollar check for iPad's, or, and it's five thousand.
Well, how did that happen? Because we have budget and we just, we have like twenty, twenty, sorry, I'm saying, we have like twenty, twenty policies that are, you know, were affected by the, but, but the changes, so you do an item, are gonna be, still living policy for the next few weeks. So I think that's a half a year. I was trying to show you, I thought it'd be nice, and said it could be done for a while, but, yeah, I think it's, wow.
So what are we saying here, um, I mean, are we, any more discussion, or? Okay, uh, how about that from definitely, please? Can we write a catch-up back? If we move on definitely, and I don't have to, we can table it, it takes the motion to break it back. So what's the motion is definitely until our next special meeting, not a regular meeting, we're gonna have to have a special meeting before a regular meeting. So, the motion on the floor, and I shouldn't be telling her what to say, but the motion on the floor is to table it to our next special meeting, is there a second? Okay? Any discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor of tabling this to our next special meeting, what's the half of that time, in the next couple of weeks? Please say aye. Say motion passes.
How long? Can it take to get them?
Well, in, in visiting with Corbin, she said that, must have been the July board meeting last year, that something of this nature was approved. And it was pretty close to.
Giving them.
This, this started school when they were up.
Might have to.
Okay, so let's not, let's not, let's not stand, sit on this, okay, let's get our answers, answers.
Any chance we could give some budget numbers before?
Well, the, our idea is that we're gonna get budget numbers, um, within the next couple of weeks. That's why we're gonna have to have a special meeting. And we'll, and Anna's gonna talk about that in your report. Okay? Anna's gonna talk about that in your report. Okay, so, um, we table that, and so, we know we moved it, move on definitely, so now I need a motion to, uh, pay the bills. Move them. Okay? Probably move the second to pay the bills. Is there any discussion or questions on the bills? Discussion or questions on the bills? Discussion or questions on the bills? All in favor of paying the bills, please say aye. All those? Motion passes, okay. So, Mr. Locke, your very first superintendent report.
Yeah. So, let's start with facility updates. Um. In the elementary library, specifically carpet tiles, uh, were installed by Tom's Home Furnishings, they're, they're gonna finish it off with a rubber trim to finish off the roof. Uh, in both the elementary and high schools, the custodial staff have been working on summer maintenance, including waxing, shampooing, and painting. Um, high school boiler, Gary Keller was in a week or two ago to kind of discuss what's going on there, um, and what it might look like getting our fuel oil, oil boiler back up and running again. Um, he doesn't have any sell, he didn't really give me any solid numbers at the time, uh, but there was, they had to take a piece of metal off the outside of it, um, just to test it and make sure everything was, was okay with it, essentially. Boiler at the elementary school, I know it's kind of been a, a point of contention, I think it's, from what I've, I've been told is that boiler is back up and running again. Um, but I think it would be worthwhile for the facilities committee to meet and discuss options for that boiler moving forward.
Mention happened in earlier, Cindy. Well, that would be James, and, well, they need to meet with that before we start doing, um, harvesting. Okay? You say anything about James? I know you would, James.
Uh, moving on to preschool, I've been visiting with a preschool teacher to discuss the lease agreement, any concerns that they may have. Um, she has sent me just some, I, I, I sent her a, a copy of the lease agreement, and gave her the permissions to make some comments on there, just to kind, so we can kind of get both sides' perspectives involved in creating the lease agreement. Uh, we'll discuss that later on in the, in the meeting here, but, um, I, I just think, I know that the val, the value that preschool adds to our K-12 building, uh, so I just think that's something I really need to focus on moving forward. N E C L boot camp and D P I drill down, uh, the Department of Public Instruction Drill Down will be held on Wednesday, August sixth, in Bismarck. Uh, the boot camps are set for August seventh for superintendents and September tenth for principals, both being held at the Radisson in Bismarck. On the fifth of August, from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty is the N C E C superintendent and principal orientation meeting. Um, new administrator mentor program, myself, Mr. Hass, Mr. Everie, and they will all be participating in the state mentorship program provided by the N E C L this year. Health insurance, uh, we received our health insurance vote from Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, we're looking at a pretty substantial increase for this year, and Zane, what was that?
Twenty-one point two percent.
Increase of twenty-one point two percent in our health insurance career. Which.
I, I haven't been here forever, but I, you know, it's been.
I thought we had like a fifteen one year, but.
Yeah.
I've never heard of the twenty-one percent, you know, what do we have last year, one or two? Yeah. Anyway, we'll deal with that.
And you just got.
Yeah, I know, but, we're all set, we have to deal with that, we'll figure it out. Be part of what I did to talk.
Uh, we talked already about staff technology as far as that rotation is concerned. Um, I got. In terms of e-rates, I got the account administrator changed over to myself. I've been working with Dave Scogan with the e-rate program, uh, to get any, any, and all preliminary forms filled out as soon as approved. Um, basically, our twenty-twenty-five application is still pending approval on that, so that's something that was in place before I took the job. Uh, like I said earlier, the guardrails passage, I'll be meeting with Sue on Thursday to kind of be baptized into the, um, be legendary program. Uh, budget-wise, that's something that we're gonna be really digging into the next week or two, um, and look at where we're going for the, for this particular school year, especially now we've got more concrete numbers in terms of insurance and that kind of thing, so. We'll be digging into that here in the next week or two, um, and obviously, it'll be something that's gonna have to be discussed at a special meeting board within the next month or so. Um, staffing, I've been working on submitting all the paperwork for our J-one teacher, I'm waiting on, we still have not received our specific letter of accreditation from Cognia, and once that letter comes, that's the final piece that I have to put in place before this proceeds, so I, I visited with the, I had a Zoom meeting with one of his sponsors today, and just to try to get myself a little more familiar with this, with the, uh, process and that kind of thing, so. Uh, just waiting on that accreditation letter from Cognia. Uh, personnel, personnel handbook, uh, something we're still in the process of reformatting, um. Whether we choose to use Adobe or whatever moving forward, we get it reformatted, I think the pieces are really big that we have in place, but reformatting, so it won't collapse into the future or something, but not here, in the not so distant future. Um, and lastly, uh, thank you to Mr. Spencer Marshon for your service to our district as a school board member. I didn't get to work with Spencer too much on the school board superintendent relationship, and it was a former volunteer of mine years ago, so I know Spencer's a girl all the time. Um, and lastly, on a personal note, it's been a great first few weeks on the job as new school superintendent, uh, the staff and community have all been with open arms, and the support is greatly appreciated, so if anything comes up, and you guys have any questions or concerns, obviously, I would like to reach you. That's all I have today.
Is there any other questions to Mr. Locke? Okay, did that move, accepted the front, is there a second? James second, then. Probably move your second to accept that you're off the front, all three of us say aye. Okay, all pass. Again, thank you. Um, okay, now we're going to go to items for discussion. Um, first of all, um, policies, E A A, as y'all are aware, is, um, school board members have to have special permission to do, um, to be paid by the school board to do different jobs, and the first thing we're gonna do is exception for Bradley Arnold to be a substitute bus driver, so I would like a motion to, um, um, allow him to be the substitute bus driver. Okay, is there a, what motion, is there a second? Okay, James second, okay, um, so this, um, requires, um, a two-thirds vote, so, Zane, you need to roll call on, on this, please? Call it.
Yes.
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 Probably have the exam.
Yeah.
Oh, for each exam, yeah. Okay, so the motion passes four to zero, so Bradley will be able to, um, put the bus driver, and watch the mic, Tom, select, okay? The next one is, are you gonna, are you gonna write? Uh, any motion to, uh. Is there a second that I can self-study? Probably move in second, um, again, we need to do the roll call. Uh, call it.
Yeah.
Have a word, Sam?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pay for, uh, uh, board of order zero. Mr. Ed, forget the substitute, I don't have one, um. Long-term sub coming, so, okay, thank you, and motion passes. Okay, we'll go to opening of biz. Um, Zane, our, Zane, do you have any physical?
I do the, the next session, you have to go on.
Am I going to that?
No, you're not, I haven't got a typo, so I, I did one of the two, so, uh.
Need to get just the other part. We call them flash for short.
Alright.
I got, I have four here. One's from CoCo. Well, I kind of gotta open it to see, you guys got. Probably wait. Yeah, I probably have, so I hope that opens up, you can figure that. Hi, it's from CoCo. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to submit this for fuel, oil, diesel, and gas. Oh, yeah, I talked to Melvin.
We can skip one, go ahead and give us a bit, or go ahead and give us a quick one.
Uh, fuel, oil, diesel, and gas for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. CoCo, fuel and maintenance, proposing a bid of twenty cents off of pump price. Um, of the date of order, and all key forty orders available after we receive rolls from fuel plants. Again. They're promoting a twenty cent off pump price of the date of order, and all key forty orders are available after we receive rolls from the fuel plant. Thank you from Melvin Southern Fuel and Supply Manager.
That was decent.
Yeah, that was, yeah, and I think that. Yeah, and fuel, fuel, oil, diesel, and gas.
Okay, four roll up there.
I think that's the only one, this one's transportation, this one's sales radiator, and this one's fuel, motor, Harvey, and, and possession, is anyone? Alright, so I'll give this one next. Harvard Oil Company says, regarding the sealed debt for delivery of diesel and gas during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Harvard Oil Company proposes a bid of twenty cents off the current, uh, current pump price. Delivery will be made immediately by call from whoever, depending who's all have the taxes. Don't have, no, so they're both twenty cents off the price.
Do they have fuel on too?
They, it says delivery of diesel and gas. This one is diesel and gas, and then the CoCo's fuel, oil, diesel, and gas, so the carpet oil, it includes fuel, oil.
Is there other, other reviews?
Uh, that one was transportation and daily reading, so I don't think it's all the same category, but.
I do, so we have nothing for CoCo only, yeah?
Uh, I don't believe so, unless.
We need to keep those, we need to keep those open?
Yeah.
Okay, so what?
You don't have a call?
Yeah, let me write that down.
Okay, so let's do the fuel oil. Um, the only, the only bid we have is protocol twenty percent off pump price. Um, the only, the only bid we have is protocol twenty percent off pump price.
Twenty cents. Harvard's deal there. Including gas as well. I mean, it said diesel and gas, fuel, oil, diesel.
Yeah, I think they, twenty cents, I would, that's all, I think that's only, you know, last year too.
So you're saying that Harvard, Harvard, Harvard didn't own this one too? For, for the fuel, for the fuel off?
I have. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, um, so then I ha, I need a motion, which one we're gonna accept, they're both the same prices.
Why?
Well, right, you, you can just assume that, but you're assuming, you don't say, it may, it may be that way. But it doesn't say, so if you assume it, then they go off, and it's gotta do the whole thing again for fuel also.
Well, if they're, but I suppose that would be a time breaker.
Yeah, I can't imagine they would be.
Yeah.
I, I just know what, you know, four years now, what comes to me is so easy.
Okay? Um, I can't make a motion, people, so one of you's gotta make a motion, here what we're gonna do. Are we talking about fuel, oil, all three, or just? Yeah, we're assuming all three, I guess we have to double check that, but.
I guess I'll make a motion for Harvard oil. Except they do for.
For all three?
Yes.
Okay, motion is, um, from Bradley, they're accepting Harvard oil for all three, is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Okay, second by James, discussion. But you're gonna have to call them to make sure that they're doing all three and then it's not going to make, well, go for fuel, let's back up again, but.
Could be.
According to what we're saying is that you're assuming that they're all the same, so.
Right, depending upon that it gives fuel oil.
Okay, so you're gonna make that amendment?
I'll make the amendment that Harvard oil was depending upon if it's all free, if not, then it's their location.
And Coco have the fuel oil.
Well, we're talking, yeah.
That's about it, will I call it for that?
Well, Coco could use the fuel oil.
Okay, all right, so the amendment, the motion, she's demanding the motion, um, that if, um, Harvey does not use the fuel oil, that Coco gets that part, is there a second about? They probably moved it second, we amend this motion. We're only talking about changing that amendment, changing that, so, any discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor then of amendment, which would read that if Harvard oil cannot use the fuel oil, Coco will get that part, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion passes, okay, so the motion now for the bid is, that was made, is that Harvard oil will get all three diesel, gas, and heating, if they do not, uh, provide heating, Coco will get that portion. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor of that, please say aye. Motion passes, so Dane, the first thing you're gonna have to do, you accept that bid, is to make sure that it's the heating too. Okay? All right, so you have transportation? Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they did, so I, I'm sure that's just oversight, so. Uh, Babe, you have the transportation maintenance? Uh, it's big.
E and P and F prepare, uh, transportation maintenance labor rate, uh, one twenty per hour. Um, and then they put, Christie put after hours slash out of town service call labor rate is one forty per hour. We have all P E F fluid on hand from Christie's bike, but later rate's one twenty, after hours and out of town service call labor rate is one forty, so twenty less than one hour, they also have P E F fluid on hand.
Do you want a bid for that?
Um, no, I guess I don't a hundred percent know what Dale's ready or.
Oh, no, Dale will just protect it.
Yes.
Okay, so, the mo, the motion, uh, for that they pick, um, E and F prepare for the, um, transportation maintenance, is there a second to that motion? James second then, discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor of accepting the E and F prepare, um, bid for transportation and maintenance of one twenty an hour, one forty per hour, um, service call, please say aye. All opposed? Motion now is carried, okay, then you can do the tires.
Scale radiator and repair, it's fifteen dollar tire repair, passenger and LT tires, thirty dollars truck, bus and ferries tire repair, so fifteen dollar tire repair for passenger and LT tires, thirty dollars for bus tire repair, plus supplies, which include patches, valves, dent sensors. Anything else extra for that, E and F. Again, fifteen dollar tire repair, passenger cars, thirty dollars bus tire repair.
Too many, I mean, new tires are buying them into?
Well, it's through the, it's a state.
Okay.
I think does, and, and is paid for that. We had a, we had a bunch of old tires in the, in the west box, and he just came out and took them out of there. It happens, he just pay, you know, with me. He normally charges, if you leave him there, then he takes them up and sells them and makes a little bit, that's how he makes, makes his money on putting on the new tires for us. It's a good, it's a good.
That's all he gets for putting on new tires?
That's all he gets. Yeah.
Okay.
All second.
No, he doesn't charge it extra, I mean, that's, it's like, if those tires have a, no, that, I can't keep them and then whatever he gets for them.
Okay, awesome, okay, motion, uh, did that made the motion, plan to second it, um, to, uh, accept the hazard type repairs that we hired. Um, discussion, 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 I'll end up with that. All right, okay, motion passes, so all we have to do then in the August meeting is to get that call and call along and remember that happened last year too, so. Okay, all right, now we'll go to lunch prices, uh, consideration of lunch prices, second helping, um, the food service has recommendation, so I'm gonna let you go, Mr. Locke.
So, in visiting with, uh, the food service and Tracy, uh, we talked about rising costs and, and the limitations of some of our subsidies, uh, she and I both agree that would be feasible to increase the rates or prices for K-six lunch, twenty-five cents from two eighty-five to three dollars and ten cents. Um, seven twelve lunch would also go up a quarter from three ten to three thirty-five. Breakfast would go up a quarter from two seventy-five to three dollars, adult lunches would go up a quarter from four fifty to four seventy-five. Adult breakfast also going up a quarter from three dollars to three twenty-five. Uh, second helping would be going up seventy-five cents from a dollar to a dollar seventy-five. And milk, uh, the cost for, or charged for a carton of milk would go up a dime from fifty cents to sixty cents.
Okay, I will take, uh, motion to accept the supertrans recommendation. Dane, move back a lot, is there a second? I have these seconds, yeah, okay, now is there any discussion about the press? Move? Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay? Without any more discussion, um, motion is to accept the supertrans recommendation for, uh, increase of, um, lunch prices and low prices, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, all opposed? Motion passes, okay, thank you, all right, um, elementary school handbook, back to reading, Mr. Jeffery? Uh, is there a second? Which one?
If you have a note? If that, if that's, if that's the thing, I guess I'd be.
Oh, okay. Any other question on that? Oh, the desk, yeah, the desk will be the same as we go.
Okay, look at that, so gas prices for kid breakfast, adult breakfast, kid lunch, and adult lunch. What's that?
Well, I see here, I remember the, the kid breakfast here, you have three in place for the grass. It is different than what it was with breakfast four hours to you.
It's a dollar eight, so a dollar three cents.
So I didn't know if we need to do that separately, you know, that exception, that's. Is that?